Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the Rules and Reference Committee hearing on Race Event Permits. I'm Andy Ginther and chair the Rules and Reference Committee. And I know that we are going to hear from the public this evening, as well as folks in the administration and from Kelly Arthur Hikes as part of council staff going through the code update proposals. And we have several folks who have signed up to speak on the issue this evening. So I'll just make a couple of introductory comments to frame the conversation here this evening. Running and walking events have become a big part of our local culture, where we host over 100 events annually that include homegrown athletes and those competing on the world stage, ranging from small runs to our city parks to internationally recognized races, including Coman Race for the Cure, Cap City Half Marathon, and the Columbus Marathon. Over the last few years, interest in organizing running and walking races has grown from a handful of local volunteers and nonprofit organizers to also include national companies and race promoters, from less than a dozen players to upwards of 40 different nonprofit and for-profit companies applying for parade permits to host a running or walking event. Frustration began to mount from local business owners and residents concerned with limited notice and increasingly frequent rolling street closures due to race events, especially in the popular race routes of downtown, the short north, and the arena district. Based on these concerns, I charged Kelly Hikes from our Legislative Research Office with coordinating with community members, city administration, various city departments, and race coordinators to find a process and any relevant code changes needed to address these concerns. Over the past several months, she has held four stakeholder meetings, numerous internal city meetings, and researched how other cities handle racing, running, races, and walks. What we'll discuss today is the code change that is proposed to create a new race event permit, which will give recreation and parks the opportunity to facilitate increased communication and the tools police need to address oversaturation of events in certain areas of town. Because communication and speedy replies to concerns were a top priority of the community members, council amended the mayor's operating budget this year to include two new staff positions. One will support recreation and parks as they become the centralized point of contact for race applications and questions, and another to support police so that Lieutenant Barth and Officer Green can have more time to plot routes and ensure that the routes include access points for businesses, places of worship, and other destinations. Thanks to Jason Nicholson, Ron Keller, and Justina Gipson of Recreation and Parks, Police Lieutenant Carl Barth, Officer Green, Firefighter Lieutenant Smith, and also Amanda Ford of Public Safety, Tim Swager of Public Service, Safety, as well as Ashley Sun of the Mayor's Office, and Jennifer Gams of the City Attorney's Office for all working with council and the community to craft this proposal. At this point, I'd like to ask Kelly Arthur Hikes to take us through the presentation of code updates proposal. Kelly?
Thank you, President Ginther. I've created a PowerPoint, and I know that our viewing audience at home will be able to see it from time to time, but I wanted to take everyone through the current process for race events right now. The way that races are permitted currently in the city of Columbus is through a parade permit, and this is not atypical across the country. But the limits that that presents is that a parade permit is only issued 72 hours prior to an event, and we can't require that folks apply significantly sooner. Because of the way the code is written, police have to be paid before the permit can be issued, and police can, by code, have to be paid 72 hours in advance. So what we wanted to do is make sure that we addressed that 72-hour limit and gave some more opportunity for both staff and race coordinators to address the public with their routes and disseminate that information. Also, under the current process, applicants had to fill out permits in up to four different city departments, and that was definitely a challenge in communicating between the departments and communicating to race applicants what all they needed to do. Separate permits are issued through Recreation and Parks for trail and park use, as well as for parade routes. And then, there was a limited opportunity to reroute events after the permit was issued and after the community has raised concerns because you're on that 72-hour time crunch. So what our community members really let us know was that they wanted a solution that acknowledged that parades and walks are different from parades. Permitting and notice requirements and timelines, they wanted those reviewed, and they wanted to increase notice to affected residents. They also, again, in that communication vein, were looking for a calendar or a listserv that would include both city-permanent events and non-permanent events so that organizers could submit that and have a better idea of what all was going on in Columbus. I'm really excited to share that Experience Columbus is a really great centralized organization that has both those permanent events and non-permanent events, and under our new proposal, Recreation and Parks is going to help ensure that races post their events on Experience Columbus's website, so folks will have that advanced notice as well. They also said they wanted to find ways to spread out the impact of races and walks and street closures in some of those areas where they believe we've reached oversaturation, particularly the short north and the arena district. And then they also wanted us to identify a centralized point of contact. They're really looking for, when they have a question or a concern, who do I pick up the phone and call, or who do I send an email to so that I know that it will get to the right place? And so what I'm going to talk about now is the legislative proposal, the ordinance that council will consider on Monday, and then Jason Nicholson is going to talk about some of the rules and regulations that Recreation and Parks is considering to implement this if it is adopted. I think the biggest and most notable part of this legislation is that we're going to acknowledge that races and parades are different. A race event will be any organized activity where participants register for a competitive, timed, or fundraising event, in which participants follow a predetermined course upon any street, public thoroughfare, and/or shared-use path, which is approved for use by the city. And then, for the purposes of this chapter, a race event will include any combination of walking, running, skating, cycling, or operation of a non-motorized device. And I think it's very important for people to understand that we are not talking about cars, motorcycles, anything motorized is not included in this proposal. We're talking about people power. So Ordinance 0574-2013 makes just a few changes to our city code. The first is that, in the first section, it changes the definition of a parade to exclude a race event. So a parade is any rolling closure with the exception of a funeral procession. Right now, it will be any rolling closure with the exception of a funeral procession or a race event. The second section allows permits to be issued by Recreation and Parks for events to be included in our community noise provisions. All this does is acknowledge the fact that Recreation and Parks is the department that processes those permits, so that if there is going to be amplified sound, they have to follow those provisions. And then, in Section 3, this is what is kind of the meat of the proposal, and it creates a new permit under the Recreation and Parks Code, so Section 924 of Columbus City Code. And what it does is it defines that race event, which we just talked about. Then it gives the director authority to promulgate rules. Those rules, again, will have to be drafted and submitted through the Recreation and Parks Commission, so there is additional oversight for those rules. The director can't just change the rules at any given moment or change fees on a whim. And then, it codifies the important role of public service, police, and the fire departments in this process. So public service, when it comes to rolling, or when it comes to street closures, we just make sure that they have to follow the same process for closing a street, that access points are still available, and that health and safety of the community is paramount. When it comes to police and fire, our police lieutenant Barth and Officer Green do an amazing job of routing the running races and walking events, and what they do is help ensure that both there's access points for emergency personnel and that traffic can be rerouted, and that they are really kind of that first point of contact for a lot of people that have concerns and questions about how to get around a race. And so we want to make sure that they have the sign-off and they have the final approval on where traffic, foot traffic, will be. And then, fire, this is extremely important, especially with such a health-focused event. We want to, part of the code requires that fire sign-off on the EMS, and, well, the code says that they have to sign off on the provisions of the race permit, and what they will do is they'll review the emergency medical support, and that can either be provided through the city of Columbus or through a private firm, but fire will be at the table to ensure that any race that is coming through the city of Columbus keeps in mind that fire and EMS and other safety forces have to be able to get to an emergency anywhere along the route, and that the people that are participating in the race event are protected with those services as well. And then, it also requires, as has been in the past, that the applicant is responsible for trash disposal and removal. The city is not going to incur the cost of that, the extra trash that's created by the event, and then that the race event without a permit is a fourth-degree misdemeanor. So, while it is, so by code, no permit will be issued less than 30 days before an event without the permission from the director and increased permitting fees. And this is really important because, again, we're starting, or at the starting point, we're at 72 hours for a permit, and what we're proposing is that in any situation, you're going to have at least 30 days of notice that a race is coming. But there's a little bit of wiggle room there to allow for processing problems and to allow for the opportunity to negotiate between the community and the race coordinator. So there would be the opportunity for the director to increase a penalty fee, if you will, for late application if those negotiations haven't been able to take place prior to the 30 days. Rules being proposed by Recreation and Parks would require that most races apply 60 days prior to the event. We're very confident that with that much lead time, we will be able to hammer out any of the kinks and questions and concerns from the community before the race application is approved, so that, one, race coordinators and directors are paying the most reasonable rate possible, and also that folks have the most notice and their issues can be addressed. Third, and I think this is important, especially for runners and for people that are trying to find their way in and out of a neighborhood where there's an event, is that the route is going to be determined, and people are going to know how to make their plans. The way that we are right now, with only 72 hours notice, those concerns can't come up until after the permit has been administered. Then the permit has to be administered again and again with the changes that are necessitated. That makes it really difficult to plan. So again, we're going from 72 hours to, in almost, in most situations, 60 days prior to an event for that first notice. Recreation and Parks is developing a listserv that will allow interested constituents to see applications as they are submitted, and again, as I said, they'll be able to express those concerns before the permit is issued and will be able to make as many of those accommodations as possible. And as I mentioned before, with Experience Columbus, all race events will be registered on ohioeventfinder.com, ohioeventfinder.com, as well as if you just go to the Experience Columbus website, it's, those calendars are mirrored. In addition, race coordinators will be required to provide written notice and maps along the race route 15 days prior to the event. So again, we're going from 72 hours or less notice to 15 days, over two weeks, and we talked to community members that told us 15 days was ideal because of work scheduling issues, to be able to ensure that they have enough notice to make arrangements to get in and out of their home or their business prior to the event. So on the screen, you'll see a sample notice. You'll see "Attention Neighbors," it will be a bright color. It will let people know what time the event starts, what time the event ends, what streets, who the race coordinator is, and contact information for both the race coordinator and the city. On the back, there will be a map that will have a legend, and it will delineate where there will be, where there will be a band, where there'll be EMS stations, where there will be, all along the route, so that folks can proactively plan their route or plan to go out and cheer for the runners in Columbus. What we learned during the public process was, again, we've reached a saturation point in the short north and the arena district, and there's been some buzz that perhaps we're putting a moratorium or that no races will be allowed in the short north or the arena district, and that is, that's not accurate. What we have done is Lieutenant Barth and Officer Green have been extremely proactive, and they've reached out to race coordinators, and they've offered them new race routes. And what they found is that when that work has been done for them, and when the route is something that will give their runners the opportunity to experience other parts of town, they're willing to have those conversations. And so at this point, the idea is that there will be no new race permits issued for the short north or the arena district. Annual events will continue. We're kind of using 2012 as the point where saturation has been met. That's not to say that in the future, additional events the community could rally around. New events, existing events might shift and go to other parts of town, so it would be an ongoing, it would be an ongoing process. But at this point, for the foreseeable future, other, any new race would be directed to other parts of town, and so far, that has been well-received. And then, race coordinators have been and will be guided in the future to alternate routes, as I said, whenever possible. So even if they're already in the short north, they'll be given kind of that concierge approach, and they offered an opportunity for their participants to experience Columbus outside of the short north and arena district. We also talked a lot about, how do I make a complaint? How do I find an answer? How do I make this event a positive experience for not just the participants, but for the community and business leaders? And what we determined was having a centralized point of contact in the Department of Recreation and Parks. So really, the point of contact when you have a race event or you have a question or a concern about an event. And in the past, the day of the event, if you have a concern or a question, it was kind of lost. There wasn't necessarily a centralized point where that information could be retained and used to address the event the following year. And that, that communication issue is going to be overcome because we will have that centralized point of contact in the Department of Recreation and Parks. Clearly, the department will need to work closely, continue to work closely with police, fire, and public service prior to issuing any permit, but they're going to be the ones handling the paperwork, and every department will be handling just their own area of expertise after that. And again, we talked a lot about communication, and so part of this proposal, which council has already adopted, is authorizing two new staffing positions. This will increase both internal city communication and external stakeholder communication. We're in the process of hiring an administrative support staff in safety so that Lieutenant Barth and Officer Green can really focus on those health and safety issues, getting the routes appropriate, making sure that there's ingress and egress, and the administrative support person can take the burden off of them for some of their other administrative paperwork kind of duties. So they have a little bit more time to focus on these 100-plus routes. And then Christina Gipson joined Recreation and Parks earlier this month, and she is there to increase, she's there to support the increased volume of events. I think it's noteworthy that this is an overtime-exempt position, so she will be at events with her colleagues to help ensure that permit parameters are met. And again, as that centralized point of contact, that department being a centralized point of contact, there will be the opportunity to address issues moving forward instead of starting over the permit process every year. They'll know what the concerns are from the community, and hopefully, no one would be a bad actor, but if they are, that can be noted and can be addressed in the permitting process the following year. So what's next? Ordinance 0574-2013 can be placed on the council agenda for a vote as soon as Monday, March 13. The new race event permit and the associated rules can be put in place as soon as 30 days after the passage from council and the mayor's signature. And then, questions and concerns can now begin to be directed to the Office of Special Events at the Recreation and Parks Department. This has been about a five-month process from the point where the community members agreed that communication and a centralized point of contact and kind of this differentiation between a parade and a race event was necessary, and so we've worked quick for government time, and Jason Nicholson and Ron Keller have been kind of the point people for Columbus Recreation and Parks Department, Lieutenant Barth and Officer Green from Division of Police, Lieutenant Smith from Division of Fire, and Tim Swager from Public Service. And then we had over 35 community members that actively participated in this process and really are bringing forward this proposal alongside city staff. So at this point, if you have additional questions, we have representatives from the departments, and I'd be happy to answer anything I can as well.
Thank you very much, Kelly, on all of your work with both internal city staff and external community stakeholders on this process. I guess one of the questions I have probably is for Jason Nicholson at Recreation and Parks. With this proposal, the authority to implement rules and regulations regarding this new race event permit would go to Recreation and Parks. Can you talk to us about the new proposed fee structure and how that would work for current races and then new races to Columbus?
Yes, President Ginther, thank you for the opportunity to speak this evening. Regarding the rates and pricing set, we did an extensive amount of research for other major cities around the country to identify what could be a fair process for the city of Columbus to implement, something new, actually groundbreaking for us to be taking such a proactive approach in dealing with various permit issues. What we have identified was is that many of the organizations that produce events here in the city of Columbus are nonprofit-based or benefit nonprofits, whether they be produced by a private promoter. There's generally the need to generate funds that stay within our community and benefit the citizens. One of the things that we looked at was also the past experiences that many of the folks have gone through in securing the various permits to do events. For example, in previous years, if you wanted to use a park as a start-finish location for your event, you would pay a park fee, and you would have a separate application for that. Then if you went out onto the streets and utilized road areas for your event or your walking participants, you would then pay a fee for your parade permit. If you utilized any parking meters or occupied any areas of the public right away, you would also pay a permit fee for that. Utilizing stages within public parks, again, additional costs. What we've tried to do with this process is to make it easier on those who seek to do events in the city while also giving us a better ability to manage. With having to send folks to so many different departments with such a limited amount of time, and many of them being volunteers, we were looking at trying to make this a beneficial process where the new race permit application will actually include all those various details, so that when you do an event, if you're completely on a trail, you will fill out that same application, provide the information to Recreation and Parks 30 days in advance, and you'll pay an application fee. What we saw was there was a need to have both nonprofit and for-profit rates, simply because what we're seeing around the country is a national trend for race coordinators professionally to set up races, events, in 50, 60 different cities over the course of the year. In a lot of cases, those folks do not have the time or the staff resources to attend city meetings, to be in town for extended periods of time. So essentially, they come in a few days before and try to do the majority of their planning. That puts undue restrictions and, shall I say, inconveniences, not only residents, business owners, property owners, but also creates a lot of difficulty for city departments to be able to communicate effectively. Everything from our, you know, street paving operations, our first aid services, our policing efforts, all are impacted by the availability of streets, the number of people gathering, et cetera. So in this process, we've tried to differentiate between not only nonprofit and for-profit, but also identify that events that are much smaller and have less impact, their rates should also reflect that. In looking at this new race permit process, which will encompass a lot of several permits into one, essentially, we have a trail course. If you're using a Recreation and Parks trail, you start in a park, end in a park. We're looking at a 30-day lead time on that particular use of the space. All of the amenities you receive from Recreation and Parks, whether it be stages, restroom facilities, et cetera, will all be incorporated into one application. For road courses, which are events that primarily just run on the roadways here in Columbus, or events which utilize a combined area of trails and road courses, we will be asking for applications to be submitted 60 days prior. With that advanced notice, what we will be able to do is take the routes that have been generated, we'll be able to include traffic maps that show where various detours and roadway closures will be, we'll be able to identify locations within parks where events are set up for the various enforcement efforts of the city regarding like the health department that shows up to check for food inspections, or the licensing department that checks for various licenses needed for people who are selling goods within the city. So what we're trying to do is combine all this into one basic application that you can use across the board. In that process, we've actually been able to eliminate some fees for these various permits, and so essentially, where you might have paid $100 for a parade permit in the past and $100 for a park permit, you're now going to get both of those for $100 if you are a nonprofit organization with less than 1,000 participants. So what we're trying to do is meet the growing need, but as well as treat every group as fairly as we possibly can, to make this something that is not a burden that we deliver to them at the last minute. At the same time, we have the abilities with the advanced notices that we're generating. We will now have a shared calendar that currently has over 250 different events around town on it that will be shared with all major city departments. Anyone that needs it within the city departments will have read access to it. We will continually update that calendar, which will allow us to better coordinate our own city services with the anticipation of the events that are going to be coming to town. So that is, those are our paramount keys to this. I could go through specifically, if you'd like, the rates as we have set. Currently, a nonprofit event that would be getting a race permit fee for either streets, sidewalks, or park space with less than 1,000 participants would pay a $100 fee. If there is a situation in which they are unable to apply by the prescribed deadline, that fee would automatically double, and that is to encourage folks to continue to meet deadlines, provide us the information which is necessary for the other operations of the city to take place. Folks in business districts, area civic associations, Folks in business districts, area civic associations, all of those individual groups are listed on our listserv. They will be receiving updates from us when these applications are received, if there is impact to their area. This gives them the opportunity to go out within the community, collect any updates that they need or any issues that need to be resolved, and return those back to our office, giving us time to be able to work internally to manage the situation while also keeping the race coordinators apprised of the situation, so at which point if we need to have further discussion, there needs to be compromise, those of us at the table here will be able to meet with all the affected parties and reach a resolution. For an event which would be, again, utilizing any one of the three course definitions, for 1,000 to 4,999 participants would pay a base fee of $200 as a nonprofit. The cost would be 400, again, for a late fee. For over 5,000 up to 14,999, that application fee for a nonprofit is $500. And for over 15,000 participants, the base fee would be $1,000. And what we're looking at is not only the ability to save from what they may have had to get in previous years with other permits, but also trying to put Columbus at a point where it is very close to a threshold of instilling rates within the community so that groups can understand what their effect is, but also understand how to budget for being able to produce events, and to make sure that what they're reaching out to do is going to be beneficial for their organization as well as financially feasible. What we have also established as far as the for-profit rates go are that an event with less than 1,000 participants that is produced by a for-profit entity for the sole purpose of generating profit and revenues, the base fee would be $500 if you apply by your prescribed deadline, $1,000 if you were within those deadlines. Keep in mind, applying inside of a deadline does not guarantee, even if you do pay these additional fees, that your permit can be issued. Much of this is going to come down to the city's ability to staff the event and to provide the various services that we need to make sure that this is a, reaches a meanable, agreeable process for everyone, that it can be used. The secondary piece is that if you have 1,000 to 4,999 participants as a for-profit entity, you would pay a $1,000 base entry fee. As for 5,000 to 14,999, excuse me, it's a $2,500 fee. And if you have in excess of 15,000 participants and you are going to Columbus as a for-profit entity, your initial race permit fee would be $5,000. Within those service fees, those are essentially very similar, if not a little below, the national averages. We have shied away from what some cities are doing, which is a per-participant cost, simply because the way the city operates, we expect that the organizers that are planning these events need to be able to have a budget, they need to be able to plan and organize, and the city resources do not allow us to be collecting from folks in the rear. It is not our intention to take all the money that comes in for these causes or events. It's the goal is to make sure that we can continue to effectively offer experiences, nonprofit organizations the opportunity to do fundraising, and to, of course, minimize the impact on those who are not necessarily interested in participating. So, they're, of course, as I mentioned, very similar with the deadlines. If they do not meet the deadlines for their, you know, timeline, 60 days, 30 days, et cetera, those fees double as well. So there is an incredible amount of urgency put into not coming to Columbus three days in advance to produce your event, but working alongside our city department representatives up to a year in advance if possible to get your materials here, to make it available to us so that we can communicate it throughout the public.
Thank you. Great information that I wanted to make sure that we share in the context of this hearing for folks that may be tuning in or that are here to participate. Lieutenant Barth, it's my understanding now that police and safety are going to maintain the responsibility and authority over the route specifics and the routes assigned to races. How are you dealing with, maybe this is a question that has to do with neighborhoods where there might be already a feeling of oversaturation, and then other neighborhoods who may be seeing some of these race routes for the first time as new races come to Columbus or as you move routes around? How are you going to handle that?
Thank you, President Ginter. First of all, I'd like to thank Kelly for all of her research, and particularly Wrexham Parks. Between Jason and Ron Keller, they did a yeoman's job at putting the stats together. In response to your question, yes, we will be doing about the same type of thing that we currently do. The point of contact will, however, be Wrexham Parks. As to dealing with the community, my phone rings whenever they hear about something. We would ask, and we have good cooperation in several of the different communities, for the races to go in and talk with the community, people in and of themselves. Let them know what they are planning in different areas. We're beginning to use the Franklinton area now, a little bit more utilization over there than what we have in the past. And as I was telling Kelly, just this last week and a half, I've turned down two races in the short north. One of them has relocated up to Ohio State University on Lane Avenue in Columbus area. The other one, they haven't relocated yet to any place I'm aware of. They were talking about going outside the city. But we explained that the short north area where they wanted was saturated, and they had to select other areas. So yes, we do plan on working with the sponsors of the different events, race directors, and also with the community. And then through Wrexham Parks and the putting of the notices on all of the affected businesses and residents along the route, that should greatly improve. We have required in the past some organizations to already do that, i.e. the bigger ones, the marathon, half-marathon, some of those bigger ones, yes, we do require them to contact churches and businesses of certain natures along the route.
Thank you, Lieutenant Barth. Lieutenant Smith, how will the proposed changes help benefit the Division of Fire to make sure that the appropriate EMS and other services are assigned and dedicated for these events as they pass through different Columbus neighborhoods?
Well, first of all, President Ginter, I appreciate the opportunity to speak. Prior to this proposed legislation, President Ginter, other than the larger sporting events, Nationwide Columbus Marathon, Cap City Half Marathon, Race for the Cure, Columbus Division of Fire was never really put in the loop or mandated to be in the loop. Thus, I honestly believe the taxpayers were somewhat at risk because if there is not proper EMS coverage at the event, then the 911 call is made. And as you know, President Ginter, we will respond. With this legislation, we now get to the table. We start out with something we call simply as an IAP, Incident Action Plan. That plan will basically formulate what the EMS need is and is not. And in some events, if we're talking small, we're talking 200, 300, we will look at what they've used in the past. That might be acceptable at that point also. However, the idea that events can come to town and not actually play on a level playing field along with the other big events, this legislation obviously speaks to that. We will develop a matrix that will follow a certain number and guidelines. What's the distance? Is everybody walking? In this Incident Action Plan, we talk about communication needs, we talk about weather conditions, we talk about a number of things. I don't want to bore you with all that stuff, President Ginter, but we obviously feel that this is an excellent, excellent legislation and puts the taxpayer and our emergency service on a level playing field.
Thank you, Lieutenant Smith. And I think, I guess this probably goes to Kelly, but any of the other folks representing the city departments. Based on your research, is this following a national trend we're seeing with racing events like this, or is this somewhat unique in our approach to this problem? As I've talked about it before, it's a good problem to have. People want to come to Columbus and run routes in our neighborhoods and hopefully come and spend the night or two in our hotels and frequent restaurants and so forth. But it's a problem that we need to make sure we have a good plan moving forward to support our residents and businesses that are here day in and day out. So Kelly, any reaction to that?
Yeah, President Ginter, what we learned is that kind of the first, the answer to the first part of your question is that we're a little above normal or above average when it comes to the number of new events that are looking to make Columbus home. And so, again, we are very fortunate, but we're also dealing with unprecedented growth in that area. And so, we were looking for opportunities to maybe be a leader in addressing those issues. Most cities that have a race event permit really do use the same language that they use for parades. However, the city of Columbus with that 72-hour limit, we really felt like the, and the feedback that we got from residents was that a parade is a First Amendment issue, and we don't want to do anything that would impede on people's opportunity to express themselves. But a running race is a little bit different. And while physical activity is incredibly important, and the races are, can be a huge benefit to the community, either through the contributions that nonprofits are able to raise and put back into our community, or even just the economic development that is associated with large events. So we wanted to make sure that we were able to differentiate that. And what we found was, in many other cities, even though they didn't have a quote-unquote "race event" permit, they were able to push back their application times. And in those cities that pushed back their application times and required folks to make that, to get their permit 30, 60 days in advance, that communication was increased, and people that were coming from out of town were well aware, they look at the code, they find out what they have to do, they call the department, they find out what the minimum is that they need to be able to participate in the city that they've chosen, and that's how they set up their schedule. And so what we wanted to do was push that back so that we could get people from all over the country that come to Columbus as a destination to kind of force their hand a little bit, to plan ahead and put Columbus earlier in their process, in their planning process, so that our residents could get the benefit of both the event and the increased notice to make other plans or to plan to participate. So the long answer is, no, a race permit isn't something that is a trend across the country, but we believe, based on our feedback and conversations that we've had with other people that do my job and that do Jason's job, that we could be at the beginning of
From the city departments.
Kelly is right that we are getting an increased number of people coming in, and it speaks very well of the city. Like to drop back one, when you asked previously, but with the community, we will work with them for points of penetration of the route, and identify those points of penetration. In fact, just this morning, we went out with Capital City Half Marathon people, and we was working on those type of issues to make sure that the community is not locked in, giving them an avenue of exit or ingress to their businesses. But you're correct, and many other cities would love to have some of the problems that we have with people wanting to come in and hold different events.
Well, thank you again for you all being here and for answering some of my questions. And now we get on to the public testimony that we're all here for this evening regarding this proposed legislation. Our first speaker is David Babner. Mr. Babner, welcome to Council Chambers. If you come forward to the podium, share your name, address, any organizations you represent. And it looks like you have signed up to testify in support of this legislation.
Yes. President Ginter, my name is David Babner. My address is 7566 Heatherwood Lane in Dublin, Ohio. I'm the founder of M3S Sports, a Columbus race management company. I'm also the race director of the Capital City Half Marathon, one of the largest half-marathons in the region. It has an economic impact in excess of $7 million and raises hundreds of thousands of dollars for all our official charities. I want to thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight in support of this ordinance and the proposed changes to our race permitting process. I have been a race producer for over 13 years. The problem of too many people wanting to run events in our downtown is truly a great problem to have and one we would never have anticipated when we started the Capital City Half Marathon 10 years ago, when the running and walking community was just being built in our city. Having out-of-state race organizers want to use our city demonstrates the success of our collective efforts to grow our running and walking community and highlights the fantastic growth of our city. The running and walking community has experienced tremendous growth. Some estimates now show that over 150,000 residents refer to themselves as runners and walkers. As mentioned recently in the Sports Business Journal, a testament to our running and walking community in Columbus is that we're able to support two major marathon or half-marathon events, in the Columbus Marathon in the fall and the Capital City Half Marathon in the spring. When we started the Capital City Half Marathon back in 2004, Columbus had one, well, Columbus had three running stores. Now there are eight, many with multiple locations. In 2004, there was one training group. Now there are dozens with thousands of residents preparing for Cap City and other events, including numerous charity training groups. In 2004, we had 3,000 participants. This year, we'll have over 15,000. In 2004, we had only a handful of hotel room nights. Now we fill over two hotels. The Columbus Sports Commission is hitting home runs left and right for Columbus, a mayor and a city council that have found the funding and passion to make downtown thrive. City leaders are putting their feet on the ground and have embraced this active lifestyle. Mayor Coleman has participated in Cap City over three times. Councilmember Klein has run Cap City on multiple occasions. Yourself, Council President Ginter ran your first half-marathon with us last year. Councilmember Mills has participated in our event in each of the last two years, and Kelly's also participated in Cap City. We've definitely become a great place to live, work, and celebrate the active, healthy lifestyle. With a record number of events in 2012, there's no doubt a saturation point has been reached of races using repetitive courses in our downtown. The community fatigue for these types of events was evident and necessitated this type of legislation. Many affected homeowners and business owners complained of lack of notice or concern for their business or convenience. A 72-hour turnaround time on permits placed a heavy burden on Lieutenant Barth and the Columbus Police Department for scheduling, and the failure of many of the events to have a medical or emergency plan placed an undue burden on Lieutenant Smith and the rest of the Columbus Fire Department when many of these race organizers simply relied on the 911 system. Back in October of 2012, I was honored to be asked to be engaged in this process in numerous large and small meetings. Your office, President Ginter, should be applauded for your quick action as this ordinance is innovative and well-thought-out. The new ordinance provides a consistent process for all involved, ample notice for affected residents, and predictability and accountability for all race organizers. One point of contact, a more public notification process, and more responsibility on the race organizers, a marked improvement, and will really help restore balance. I want to thank Kelly for all her hard work. Myself and our entire team at M3S Sports and Cap City are strong supporters of the ordinance, and we look forward to continuing to work with all the parties involved, especially the four gentlemen behind me, as we get these rules promulgated. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, David, for coming down tonight, for participating in the process and helping us formulate, I think, a much more effective proposal that's going to be more successful for the community moving forward. Our next speaker is Matt, is it McGowan? Mr. McGowan, welcome to Council Chambers. If you'd come forward, share your name, address, any organizations you represent, and sir... And sir, you have three minutes to speak to the ordinance.
Thank you. My name is Matt McGowan. I actually live at 330 Spellman in Granville, Ohio. But I also started a publication 25 years ago, Run Ohio. Also directed the Columbus 10K for 17 years, won the inaugural race 36 years ago. I presently also help out with the Arnold 5K, 5K Pump and Run. Now again, when I got the 10 or 12-page ordinance, there were some concerns that I had that there wasn't everything spelled out. One of the concerns is the 60-day permit. No problem with that. However, presently, you pay the police three days before, so forth. Some smaller races that might generate the money through entry fee would have trouble paying 60 days in advance. Not sure because that wasn't explained yet. Also, the map situation, that's the first I saw that. I'm not sure who would be responsible if those maps would be delivered to each household or would be put on the internet so people can see it. One of the other concerns that I might have for small races is that even though I do the Arnold 5K Pump and Run, it's the largest event of its kind in the country with 850 participants, sells out in less than a day, our permit fee would go from $110 to $1,000 if we add the 5K. So that's a nine-time increase in permit fee. I've probably been to over 100 cities in Ohio. I've been to national championships, Olympic trials, and other races throughout the country. To my knowledge, no city has a separate fee for profit and nonprofits, one fee for a race. They don't distinguish that. I'm not sure if they do that for the softball fields or other events. So some events, even though we're local, the Arnold Classic, even though it brings in $42 million to the city, the Arnold 5K Pump and Run, which I said sold out in 32, which sold out in 12 hours, brings in people from 32 states and Canada. So again, that's a concern that there are always going to be some races, that it might be small races like the Columbus 10K. I used to put in a couple thousand dollars myself to keep that event going because it was more of an athletic event where many races now are fundraisers, as you stated. And I would hate to see some of the athletic events, even though they're smaller races, have an extra fee because they're not tied into a nonprofit group. Also, I do not know of any event that charges a per-person cost, as mentioned. Again, I think that, you know, it's a slippery slope when we start separating how we charge people for various events. I personally would like to see all people pay the same fee, whether it's a profit group or a nonprofit group, if it's a road race. It should be a fee for a road race, whatever that fee would be, based on how many participants you have. But again, the main thing, I think, as, as anyone would say, is being considerate for the community. I know I've been doing the Arnold Race for 13 years. We modified the course twice. It's on Sunday morning, so there's always a church or so involved, but we tried to stagger the start so it's not starting when the people are trying to get to their service. We also have to be very concerned with the Arnold Race because it does have about 20,000 people trying to get to the expo, and no matter which direction we go, it would cause an impact. The reason we have to start at the, at the convention center is because those athletes in the Pump and Run, the first two hours of the day, have to go in and lift weight or a portion of their weight for that event. So we're glad that we're still able to keep that event at the sports festival during the Arnold Classic. Thank you very much.
How about that for Tommy? Mr., Mr. McGowan, thank you. You raised a number of different issues and, and questions, and I think a lot of them, I'll probably look to Jason for a response on, but obviously the other folks from the administration, if there are thoughts there. And if, if for some reason you don't get enough answers tonight, what I'd like to do is make sure you follow up in writing with some of those, or if you have your testimony written down, get that to Kelly if there are additional questions that we ought to get a response to before council considers this legislation next Monday. But Jason, you want to take a stab at some of the questions and points raised?
Yes, on the, on the first question, a reference to the fees and the collection of time in, in advance. Currently, we are working with Division of Police to make sure that there is both a time limit that they can accept the funds, that's within the window of the application timeline. For example, if your event, you apply 60 days in advance, we are not requiring the payment of police at this time 60 days in advance. What we are looking to do, we recognize that a lot of folks that run the smaller events are looking to take in revenues from participants as they join up, and that's at the time period when they would still be able to pay them. I think right now, we're looking at addressing that through policy, which will be roughly somewhere a week to two weeks in advance. So we're certainly cognizant of the fact that increasing fees at any point is certainly going to be an issue for groups, and we want to make sure that we don't eliminate anyone unnecessarily by increasing the fees. Regarding the, the maps and the distribution that was brought up on the screen, essentially what happened was is there was a need to be able to do advance notices to the folks that are along the trail, that are along the, the route. What we were looking to do as city departments was not only give them an opportunity to review it in advance, but also make sure that they had something in hand that would allow them to help themselves. We recognize the value of many of the events that are taking place, and certainly we're trying to be as fair as we can and also think about those things when we look at developing processes. I've been very fortunate to be able to work with some gentlemen who have an extensive history with the city, especially Lieutenant Barth, the longest-serving officer, to be able to provide us guidance on what he feels are things that are definite issues for races as well as how to address those. So we are, we are definitely in favor of trying to find a balance here in Columbus and certainly not in a situation where we want to put anyone out of business. We have, at this point, started our planning process, assuming that we move forward today with, you know, going to council on Monday night for passage. We would be planning a meeting in the fall of this year of October, which is something we host every year with the folks who currently plan other events, concerts, and festivals, where we would bring in all the race coordinators. We did meet with them earlier this year to kind of go over these proposed fees. The, the interesting piece was that after the meeting, some had, some had actually told us that they weren't high enough. But we felt that initially, putting that fee structure in place was something for discussion and that we would continue as a city to look into those things and bring folks to the table every year to be able to get their input on how our process is working, how it can be improved, how it can be streamlined. And there are growing pains, and certainly that's something we're experiencing now. I can remember three years ago, it was 50 permits. Last year was 105, and this year, it's probably going to be 150-plus. So it's, it's a definite situation where we need to try to, to work within the community and our, our resources.
One of the things, Mr. McGowan, raised was the potential consideration of a per contestant fee. And I just want to make sure I'm clear that we're not looking at charging per participant, per contestant, but a couple of different classifications, a range, that there would be a sliding fee based on the size, broken down, I think, the numbers you shared, how many participants there are, and I think three different classifications you went through. And then whether or not it's a profit, a for-profit or a not-for-profit, the difference. Those are the two major areas of distinctions and classifications. We're not looking at considering a, a flat fee per participant that would impact some larger races much more significantly.
And in response to your question, no, we are not looking at a per participant cost. I do not have the specific information in front of me, but we did note that there were other cities around the country that did choose to go that route, dollar per participant or otherwise, looking at it as if the race coordinators could pass that along to participants. We did not feel that was something that was, was fair or even of interest to the city. Our goal is to make sure that these are as best managed as possible and also that we have flexibility. And certainly at this point, looking at having a participant, if you look, if you have an event with over 15,000 people based on the price, it's very small. I mean, we're talking nickels at that point, per participant. Certainly if the city's permit fee is excessive or considered excessive, if you were able to increase your participation by a few participants, it should be able to cover that. Simply, it's standard practice of business, is the idea is the participants will pay the way. Whether I agree with that or not is, is certainly not a situation we're in, but we did have to start somewhere, and that's essentially where we did this year, through much debate, much discussion. And like I mentioned, we did invite all the race coordinators to a, to a meeting to discuss the rates, and really, we did not receive any negative feedback. And that's been roughly two months ago. So I, I welcome the opportunity to have further discussion about it, and I think that everyone on this panel is receptive to getting the feedback from Mr. McGowan and others. Because without seeing all the angles, we certainly may have missed something, but our goal is to try to make this the best process for the city that we can.
Thank you, Jason, for that response. And I, Mr. McGowan, if any questions still loom or any issues, please feel free to, to follow up with Kelly. Kelly will share her information with you after the hearing, and we'll make sure to get a written response before council considers this next Monday. Our next speaker this evening is Tyrone Thomas. Mr. Thomas, you don't want to, don't want to testify?
Thank you. Put off.
Sure, sure. Our next speaker is Mark Conti. Mr. Conti, welcome back to Council Chambers. I know you've been here before. And if you come forward to the podium, share name, address, any organizations you represent. And it looks like you have signed up to testify in support of this ordinance.
Yeah. Thank you, President Ginter. My name is Mark Conti. I represent Capital Crossroads Special Improvement District, which is an association of more than 500 property owners within the core of downtown Columbus. You know, as a downtown booster, we're always very excited when people want to do events downtown, and we're excited to be the host. But as the previous speaker said, there is a bit of fatigue with some of, some of the races or the number of races we're seeing now. And so the proposed legislation and the proposed rules are very welcome. Of particular note is, is getting a central point of contact and, and a notification process. Downtown is obviously busy Monday through Friday, but a lot of people don't understand exactly how busy it can be on the weekends. And we do have a surprising number of people, for good or bad, working in their offices on, on Saturday mornings and Saturday afternoons and sometimes even on Sunday. And so it can be a bit of surprise when they're heading into work that the, the roads are closed. And while people downtown are no strangers to road closures and congestion, just being notified in advance can be very helpful. And as, as a property owner association, we're in a great position that as we get notified of races and other events in the area, that we can pass that on to downtown property owners and business owners. So that's going to be extremely helpful. That's all I had, and thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Conti, for coming down this evening and sharing your thoughts on the proposed ordinance. Our final speaker this evening on the proposed ordinance is John Angelo. Mr. Angelo, welcome back to Council Chambers. If you'd come forward to the podium, share name, address, any organizations you represent. And I think you've signed up to speak in support of the ordinance this evening.
Yes, thank you. So John Angelo, 21 East Fifth Avenue, Suite 103. I am the Director of the Short North Alliance. And thank you, President Ginter, for taking the testimonies of the community in this, this matter. We greatly appreciate it. And I do want to go on record saying, we are extremely supportive of the races, the runs, the walks, the marathons. We think that they're a vital part of a very successful and thriving community. So in no way do we want to appear anti-race. We, the Alliance became involved in this conversation last year after numerous runs and races and many, well, I mean, you put too much of emphasis on it, but several unfortunate conflicts with events which we had planned or reports from businesses that access had been blocked to their stores, residents who were blocked and couldn't get out of their communities. And as we began to talk to other constituents in the community, such as the convention center, the arena district, North Market, Victorian Village, Italian Village, we found that this had been echoed through many constituents. So as you're aware, we banded together and approached the city to say, we, we would like to find some collaborative solutions to how this all could work better in the future. And I do want to say that in addition to the comments that Mark Conti had made, which I'm fully in agreement with, the advance notice portion is critical, but also the, the details, not just to know that a race is going to happen on a date, which is kind of where we have been in some cases, but to really find out well in advance with some of the timelines that Kelly has spelled out, whether it's 30 days in advance or 60 days in advance, what exactly is expected to happen? What will the route be? Whether the entire street will be closed or just lanes of the street? Will meters be bagged? Will cars be able to cross through the, the run at any time? Or will traffic be halted in, in crossing the line until the event is over? So these things are, are very important to us. And some of the other elements that were, were stated, such as the notices on doors, that is amazing. That would be phenomenal for residents to really get that advance notice. And we know that it has been made directly to them. It's very difficult for us sometimes to know that we've gotten a communication to them. We try to collect as many email addresses as we can. And certainly through our organization, we will disseminate any information that is presented to us, to our constituents. But we do know that there are people who are off the grid and that reaching out in that way really speaks to a sense of community. We also appreciate balancing the load that the, the city is looking at promoting other courses. We feel this is actually very strong for the city to introduce people to other areas, not just the arena district, not just the short north, but get them into the Frank Blinton area, get them into the Discovery District area, and let them experience other aspects of the city. I think that's very strong. And again, on the advance notice, the, the ability for the community to weigh in with concerns prior to final permits being given, so that there is some negotiation time. So we do appreciate that the Alliance would be one of the organizations that the city would be reaching out to and that we would have that opportunity to review the parameters of any proposed run through the district. And I do want to go off saying, thank you very much for chairing this committee and for the work that the entire staff has done. It's been a great pleasure working with the team. The collaborative spirit has been wonderful on this, and we appreciate the expeditious manner in which it was handled. Thank you.
Thank you, John, and thanks for your participation and advocacy and work on behalf of the Short North Alliance, but also other neighborhood and business and community interest during the process. I think Jason, John brings up a good point. Walk us back through, so how the process would work, and maybe Kelly chime in here to, to make sure we're, we're being clear about this. 60 days out, this permit would be applied for. That information that the permit had been applied for goes out to folks on the listserv. If there are issues or problems, conflicts, they would, folks from the community would contact you, Jason.
Yes, they would, they would contact our office, myself.
Walk me through that specific process. If it's a, it's a block, it's an alley, it's, you know, how, how does the community or business owners walk us through that part of the process and how that'll be handled, just so that we're clear?
Okay. Well, first, as, as John mentioned, it's very important for them to get, to get information. So essentially, what they'll be receiving is a completed packet of paperwork as opposed to an application or just an email saying, hey, there's an event going on. So it will be a complete packet of materials covering all aspects of the event. They'll be given an opportunity that will be emailed out to folks who have subscribed, who are interested in being included, and we will continue to update that list as we receive information that gets out into the community. Once the feedback comes in, we will allow probably a window, a window of maybe between a week to two weeks for all the information to come back to us, feedback from the community, additional questions that might need to be answered. We will work to answer basic questions, things that may not have been included in the, the actual application, but might be fairly common. We will work with the event coordinator to make sure that we have all the details for those items which are of significant nature, involving health and safety, folks' sincere inconveniences, blocking off properties. We will be working with the various city departments to make sure that those items are revisited, and some form of response will be given back to the individuals that bring those issues up. So at the time period, we want to, we want to be very responsive. We want to make sure that we're on the front side of it instead of afterwards, because most folks know that when there's an event going on day of, the first person they come out of their house, apartment, business, or otherwise to go to is a police officer. And in a lot of cases, there are very few people involved on the planning and a lot of people working the event. So we need to make sure that not only do we give the information to the folks in the community, but that our, our fellow city employees also have the information, and we've given them a chance to address any concerns that need to be taken into consideration. At that point in time, once we've got a comfortable level that we've resolved those issues, looking at the 30-day time period, we will issue the permit. Once the permit is issued, it will then go out with a cover page, which will include any additional restrictions that may have needed to be added to the application. They're essentially the city's terms for allowing the event to move forward. We will send that on to the event coordinator. They will have that in their possession. They can continue to make the plans to have a successful event. And hopefully, what we're, what we would like to see is that the day of the event, everybody is well-informed and well-aware, and it will eliminate those calls coming into city offices over the weekend when sometimes there's no one there to answer them. That's, that can be very frustrating for the general public. That can be very frustrating for the general public. Waiting to get a call back on a Monday is typically, it's after the fact. There's no opportunity to address that. With staffing being able to be on-site, we're not only there to facilitate the permit process, we're there to assist the event coordinator in the case of, you know, emergency concerns. I know that in several cases, the police in the past have had races that have been taking place downtown, day of, the water's up along the river. They've had to reroute. We need the flexibility as a city to allow the folks who are professionals to make those judgments and also help to make sure these events are successful. They represent a strong part of our economy, and they bring people here. We are seeing that there is an interest in participation. So we just want to foster the best possible process we can.
Kelly, take us, I know you touched on this during the PowerPoint presentation, but if this ordinance is considered on Monday night and passed by council, signed by the mayor, where do we go from there? Walk us back through implementation and timeline, if you would.
Okay, so the earliest point that council could approve this ordinance, if they so choose, is this Monday, March 18th. The mayor typically takes two or three days to sign things, so we'll give a little leeway there, and we'll say the 25th of March. From that point, 30 days, 30 days for the law to become in effect. And at 30 days, that is when the Director of Recreation and Parks will have the authority to promulgate rules and regulations that Jason spoke to. Recreation and Parks will be able to move forward after, so the end of April, beginning of May, with their new processes, with the full support of the law behind them. As you know, and as many of the community members know, there's the Recreation and Parks Commission, and they do approve all rules and regulations and any changes to rules and regulations that are brought forth by the Director of Recreation and Parks. So that process is, they're already queued up to be able to go through that process and be able to implement those changes. Jason, I believe we were talking the beginning of May. Is that right?
The second week of April is typically the timeline for, that's the next commission meeting, and depending on the progression here, it'll be either April.
Okay, so to get on the commission's agenda, we're looking at the middle of April, and to be able to implement those changes, again, the beginning of May. I think it's important to note that we have amazing, amazing racing community here in Columbus, and many of the organizers have already volunteered, if you will, to participate in the race notification, going door-to-door and dropping those flyers. So we don't even need a rule or a law to back that up. They're already, they already understand. So folks that have applied under the old permit process, they're well-aware of that option, and many of them are choosing to go forward with that even though it is not
How will we check in to see how both the ordinance, the proposed changes reflecting this ordinance, and then the rules that are put together? What's the thought behind checking in with this working group that's been developing and working on these proposals over the last six months or so? Is the thought that we get back together to hear input on the ordinance changes and the rules promulgated sometime this year? Jason, what are your thoughts about checking back in on that?
Well, initially, the process that we have in place, we're essentially taking a lot of the things that already exist for how we've operated for many, many, many years in doing events in town. We will be producing what's called a race planning guide for all the race coordinators. It will contain all the definitions and information that we have, as well as references to the changes in the city code, and it will outline for the coordinators how the city can best help them, as well as the process that they need to follow, timelines, various permitting costs, et cetera. All that will be made available to them in this new packet. I do not foresee a significant number of rules being attached to this ordinance, simply because much of what we have been doing is essentially the way we're going to continue to operate, really the way we look at Recreation and Parks as being more or less the clearinghouse and the collector. And essentially, we're collecting any comments, complaints or otherwise, and trying to get those disseminated to the right folks, and we're processing the paperwork on the end. Much of the community work will be done, and the race coordinator work will be done with the police continually and the fire division. And, I mean, I thoroughly think that this is going to be something, we're trying to look at balance for everyone, so we're trying to make sure that we don't put unnecessary restrictions on races, we make it fair. And I believe that we will have that meeting again in the fall, but I look towards some of the race coordinators at this particular point in time to review what we are proposing prior to the fact that we actually implement. That's really what we're looking at, is an opportunity to share with them, this is the direction we're going. We have shared a sample version of our race planning guide, as well as the sample applications and procedures with everyone at our previous meeting. So fortunately, everyone has had a little bit of time to review that. They've also had a chance to, you know, listen to what's taking place this evening and maybe help us develop the best process possible.
So we'll check back in later this fall and just see how things are going and if there's anything else that we can do. And then just quickly, before we wrap up, for anybody tuning in, how do we get, how can people sign up for the listserv, for distribution about racing events and routes?
They actually will be able to contact us directly. Right now, they could use my phone number, 645-3335, to reach me directly to make arrangements. They could also email and put in the subject title, listserv. My email is J T Nicholson, N I C H O L S O N at columbus.gov. They could feel free to send me emails with, you know, expressing interest. What I fully expect to happen is that once we send out the first notification to the folks that we have identified as property owners, interested parties, churches, organizations, civic associations, that they will then share that with members of their groups, people that they regularly communicate with. What we will ask is that the comments be channeled back through the organization, if possible, like the Short North Alliance representing all the businesses. But certainly, we're not going to refuse to answer a question from, you know, an individual store that might be in that area. Our main thing is to make sure that the communication is not just between us and the individuals that have concerns, but also those around that might have the similar questions. So they're welcome to send me any requests to be included, and I fully think that we'll have multiple people added in an ongoing process. We will also make reference to being able to be included on this on our website, on Columbus Recreation and Parks website, where we will post an online version of the race permit guide, so that folks who are producing events, as well as those who are not, who want to question whether we are following proper procedures and so forth, will be able to look at the information we have available. It's fairly comprehensive. It also lists contacts for every city department representative that works with the individual races and events, so that if there is a question particularly regarding transportation, road closures, routes, impact, paving operations, et cetera, they would contact Tim Swager right here to ask him the questions. So we're trying to make this available as easily as we can to folks, and we know it's going to take a little while for the word to get out, but we fully anticipate that people will get on board and want to find out those details. We're working through, as Kelly mentioned, through Experience Columbus as well, to make sure that they have a link directly to anything that's coming up. If groups contact us, once they're at the point where they're in the system, they're planning to do their event, if they have, if an individual event has not filed their information with eventfinder.com, we will be making sure that's put on there before the permit's issued. We want to make sure that there's as much notice as possible.
Great, thank you. Any closing comments from any of the city officials or Kelly? Anything you'd like to wrap up with or say before we adjourn? I just want to thank you all for all of your work in putting this proposal together, and thank those from the community that came and testified tonight, but also that have participated in the work of the working group, and we appreciate their contributions. I feel very confident in taking this before council for consideration on Monday evening, that we have a great start in some dramatic improvements in the way we handle some great events in and around Columbus. So with that, we'll wrap up tonight's hearing. Thanks, everybody, for being here.